The board curriculum has been approved. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch the live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, it looks like we don't have any today.
We do have.
Okay. So moving on to procedural items. First up, we do have the draft committee meeting minutes from September 30th. Any corrections or additions from my fellow trustees? Okay. Dr. Van Wagner, I know there was one thing you and I had talked about.
Yes, I do. There's a statement in there about our tag. It talks about, you know, next year, like how we might look at some other programs. So I'd like for that to have the clarifying statement of it that we're looking at an advanced academic program, maybe at the elementary school. And so that's something we want to pilot as well as what we're doing with keeping our current way that we have our tag program. I use the word legacy, and I think that can be confusing to some folks. So just want to talk about our current, our current way that we have tag there. So I provided Kevi with those corrections, and I'd like to have that clarifying statement on the matter.
Okay. So we'll just add those to the meeting minutes from September 30th.
Yep.
Okay. And what is, I didn't hear how you phrased it at the very beginning, what you call that pilot program at every elementary building?
It's part of an advanced academic program that we would try and consider. Something that people have talked about, what are their ways, maybe if a kid doesn't want to leave their homeschool, that we could do that? And so that's something that we're having conversations, thinking about how we might be able to pilot that in an elementary building, and see if there's even additional possibility to offer some advanced enrichment type programming here in the future.
Okay. And to be clear, then, that would be in addition to the tag program?
Yes. Correct.
And what is, I didn't hear how you phrased it at the very beginning, what you call that pilot program at every elementary building?
It's part of an advanced academic program that we would try and consider. Something that people have talked about, what are their ways, maybe if a kid doesn't want to leave their homeschool, that we could do that? And so that's something that we're having conversations, thinking about how we might be able to pilot that in an elementary building, and see if there's even additional possibility to offer some advanced enrichment type programming here in the future.
Okay. And to be clear, then, that would be in addition to the tag program?
Yes, correct. That's what right now that's the thing.
And what grades would that be open to?
I'm not sure. I mean, you know, we would probably try to stick with S3, 4, you know, or the 4, 5 rather, you know, the way that we have that. But again, all that's under discussion and possibilities. So as we try and work with maybe a couple of our elementary principals, we'll keep the board in know what we might be thinking with that.
Good. That's, yeah.
Okay. Then moving on, if everybody's good with that, we will move those changes. The minutes will remain as posted, and we're going to move on to the TCAPS district course catalog.
We have no changes, no additions this month.
All right. And with that, I do know we have a number of field trip requests.
We have three field trips, one from each of our middle schools. This is the Washington DC trip. Both middle schools have taken groups of students here in the spring, a great experience for our kids. So you'll see both of those on there. A little bit of a cost difference between the two trips, that has to do with the timing of the flights and the travel. And then the other trip is very exciting, and this is a far-off trip, so we're talking spring break 2028. This is a trip for our high school students. And I did speak with Ms. Cole, the advisor on this trip. She is open to central high school students as well, potentially applying, but this is to Australia and New Zealand. She has taken lots of groups all over the world. She's got the group going to the Galapagos in the spring break of 2027. So Amy Cole is a very first advisor and has traveled all over the world with kids. So she's really excited about this one. But obviously because of the price point on that, wanting to get that out to students and families so they have time to fundraise and budget for that opportunity is sort of what she's thinking at this point.
Yeah, I did notice that's a long lead time, two and a half years.
Emily, something does a good sign that Ms. Cole will not be retiring anytime soon.
She will not be. She will not be.
Great news. Yes. Terrific. Any questions? Okay. I think as always, these are exciting opportunities. Love the perennial trips to DC for the eighth graders. And I mean, this is the longest distance flight I've ever seen, Australia, New Zealand. That's a, that's a whopper. It's almost a 24-hour trip. So kudos to her for taking that initiative. And I think we can move it to the consent agenda unless there are any objections. Okay? Great. Thank you. Moving on, then, we have our first informational item, the mobile health care unit, and I'm going to defer to Ms. DeWerner.
All right. So we're excited to be here today just to share some information and some updates on some projects that we've been working on. And I have a couple of guests joining us today. This is Hannah Wilson. She's a physician's assistant and the medical provider with the TCAPS Student Health Center. And Amy Cannon. She is the School Success Program Coordinator with Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency. So they're just going to jump in along the way and provide some information as we go as well. So we're going to start off talking about the mobile health care unit. All right. And so this initiative is really part of our ongoing efforts to reduce barriers to care and bring supports and services directly to our students and families. So especially to those outlying schools where we know transportation can be a challenge. So through our partnership with Northwest Michigan Health Center and with support from Grand Valley State University's Physicians Assistance Program, we have been able to expand capacity. We're taking the TCAPS Health Clinic Team on the road. So we've created a roadshow where we're bringing supports and services directly to our students. And this is really a great forum.
Board curriculum has heard the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch the live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, it looks like we don't have any today. Okay, so moving on to procedural items. First up, we do have the draft committee meeting minutes from September 30th. Any corrections or additions from my fellow trustees? Okay, Dr. Van Wagner, I know there was one thing you and I had talked about.
I do. I want to make, there's a statement in there about our tag and talks about, you know, next year, like how we might look at some other programs. So I'd like for that to have the clarifying statement of it that we're looking at an advanced academic program, maybe at each elementary school. And so that's something we want to pilot as well as what we're doing with keeping our current way that we have our tag program. I use the word legacy and I think that can be confusing to some folks. So just want to talk about our current, our current power ways that we have tagged there. So I provided Kaby with those corrections and would like to have that clarifying statement on the matter.
Okay, so we'll just add those to the meeting minutes from September 30th?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
And what is, I didn't hear how you phrased it at the very beginning, what you call that pilot program at every elementary building?
It's part of an advanced academic program that we would, we would try and consider. Something that people have talked about, what are their ways, maybe if a kid doesn't want to leave their homeschool, that we could do that? And so that's something that we're having conversations, thinking about how we might be able to pilot that in an elementary building and see if there's even additional possibility to offer some advanced enrichment type programming here in the future.
Okay, and to be clear then, that would be in addition to the tag program?
Yeah, correct, that's what right now that's the thing.
And what grades would that be open to?
Well, not sure. I mean, you know, we would probably be trying to stick with S3, 4, you know, or the 4, 5 rather, you know, the way that we have that. But again, all that's under discussion and possibilities. So as we try and work with maybe a couple of our elementary principals, we'll keep the board in know what we might be thinking with that.
Good, that's, yeah.
Okay, then moving on, if everybody's good with that, we will move those changes, the minutes will remain as posted and we're going to move on to the TCAPS district course catalog.
We have no changes, no additions this month.
All right, then with that, I do know we have a number of field trip requests.
We have three field trips, one from each of our middle schools. This is the Washington DC trip. Both middle schools have taken groups of students here in the spring. A great experience for our kids. So you'll see both of those on there. Little bit of a cost difference between the two trips. That has to do with the timing of the flights and the travel. And then the other trip is very exciting and this is a far off trip. So we're talking spring break 2028. This is a trip for our high school students. And I did speak with Ms. Cole, the advisor on this trip. She is open to central high school students as well, potentially applying. But this is to Australia and New Zealand. She is taking lots of groups all over the world. She's got the group going to the Galapagos in the spring break of 2027. So Amy Cole is a very versed and first advisor and has traveled all over the world with kids. So she's really excited about this one. But obviously because of the price point on that, wanting to get that out to students and families so they have time to fundraise and budget for that opportunity is sort of what she's thinking at this point.
Yeah, I did notice that's a long lead time, two and a half years.
And I think that's a good sign that Ms. Cole will not be retiring anytime soon.
She will not be, she will not be.
Great news.
Yes. Terrific, any questions? Okay, I think as always, these are exciting opportunities. Love the perennial trips to DC for the eighth graders. And I mean, this is the longest distance flight I've ever seen, Australia, New Zealand. That's a, that's a whopper. It's almost a 24 hour trip. So kudos to her for taking that initiative. And I think we can move it to the consent agenda unless there are any objections. Okay, great, thank you. Moving on then, we have our first informational item, the mobile healthcare unit. And I'm going to defer to Misty Warner.
All right, so we're excited to be here today just to share some information and some updates on some, some projects that we've been working on. And I have a couple of guests joining us today. This is Hannah Wilson, she's a physician's assistant and a medical provider with the TCAP Student Health Center. And Amy Cannon, she is the School Success Program Coordinator with Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency. So they're just going to jump in along the way and provide some information as we go as well. So we're going to start off talking about the mobile healthcare unit. All right, and so this initiative is really part of our ongoing efforts to reduce barriers to care and bring supports and services directly to our students and families. So especially to those, those outlying schools where we know transportation can be a challenge. So through our partnership with Northwest Michigan Health Center and with support from Grand Valley State University's Physicians Assistance Program, we have been able to expand capacity. We're taking the TCAPS Health Clinic Team on the road. So we've created a roadshow where we're bringing supports and services directly to our students. And this is really a great form of outreach because we are taking the team that is currently working with our students and families out in the district to our schools, introducing them to students and staff, beginning to form those connections and relationships which we know can be really important to our students and families, especially when it comes to building trust in providers. So not only can they be seen through the mobile unit, but hoping again to make those connections so our students and our families feel more comfortable accessing care and services at the TCAPS Health Center. So I'm going to turn it over to Hannah to talk a little bit more about the services that are provided through the mobile unit.
Yeah, so we, like she mentioned, we're going out to the different school sites and providing pretty comprehensive medical services. So our goal is kind of to take our services to them at the schools and like she said, provide some of that outreach and just education. So we can do essentially like full, like it says, sick visits. You know, whether it's something going on that day or like a longer lasting issue, we can do basic well child checks. We do have a behavioral health therapist who is coming with us as well, who can do like brief interventions, education on community services, make referrals or schedule them for ongoing behavioral health services. We have our dental team at our other site in Traverse City so we can get them set up for dental services. Unfortunately, that's not coming on the road with us, I wish it was. But we can get them set up for that. Really any type of like questions, counseling, just introducing them to services. We do provide vaccinations through our other sites. Unfortunately, that's one of the things that we can't bring with us. But we can look at their records, let them know, you know, if they need updates on anything. And then we can even provide bus passes to get them to our health clinic at West Middle School or at our other location in Travers if they prefer to go there. So really, it's just kind of about, you know, reducing those barriers for people to be able to get services and bringing services to them as much as we can, so.
And we launched this at Traverse City High School and I have to give a big shout out to the Traverse City High School team. They have been great, super supportive of this work and really flexible as, as we've been rolling this out and kind of working out the kinks as we go. So again, launched this on September 25th and the NMHSI team went into the classrooms, introduced themselves, talked a little bit about the services. We provided staff and students the opportunity to come out and kind of check out our layout, peek in, tour the bus if they wanted to, have that kind of, you know, time to be able to ask the providers, meet and greet the providers if you will, and just ask any questions that they might have. So five students received services on that day with a lot of interest and inquiries about ongoing services. And then NMHSI had a rep attend TC High's parent night to again build those connections, meet students, families and answer any questions that they might have. Because of the interest there, and again, just kind of rolling this out, we decided to go back for a follow-up visit at TC High. We were out there last week and 11 students received services on October 22nd and multiple other students completed the registration paperwork and consent form. And I know the team is working on following up with those students to get them scheduled for appointments. So our future goals are, we're hoping to expand our rotation and be at a different student or a different school within the district, maybe two schools a month providing services. And then we're going to continue our partnership with Grand Valley State University, looking at having their students provide parent education nights throughout the year. So really excited to have this up and running and, you know, excited to see what we can do as we go. Hannah, is there anything that I forgot or you want to add?
I don't think so, we're just excited to bring this to them and, yeah, any other questions?
Any other questions for Hannah?
Can we notify the parents ahead of time? I mean, you say we're coming here this time, so parents could actually meet their kids at the clinic?
We did actually have one do that last time, yep. And we are trying to put together flyers for every school that we're going to so those can go out and like the newsletters ahead of time so parents are aware. Ideally, if we can get students signed up for visits ahead of time, that's best case because then we have the consents on file, we can, you know, be ready to go. We're seeing people, you know, faster, being able to see more students that way. But we certainly can have people that show up that day as well. And we're actually able to send out like consent forms via text message to parents so that they can just get it right away, they can fill it out. We can have them on the phone if we need to. So if they can't leave work or whatever the barrier may be, we're, you know, we try to eliminate that. But we are notifying ahead of time, offering like pre-scheduling if they want to, so.
Good.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm familiar with the TCAPS Health Clinic located at West Middle School and I've really been a big fan of that since it was opened nearly two years ago. So I'm excited to see something that, you know, is more geographically feasible for all of our other students, even though that serves the whole district. Obviously, it requires some parent transport. I just wanted to ask a couple of things. One is, is it going to be available exclusively during the school day or do you envision more things like during parent nights?
Do you mean like the outreach events or?
The actual services? Would it be like a, a regular business day, mostly the school day? Or do you think some evening event?
I think we're still kind of figuring that out, what the needs and requests are. You know, like we said, we've only had two days so far. We've done it during the school day just because the kids are already on site then and then, you know, they can get there and go home the way that they normally would. But I think if there's a huge request for after hour services too, we're open to that.
Now, one idea we had is for our title schools, you know, we have title parent nights. There's a possibility of including the bus in those nights. Because again, the idea where TC High can, obviously the kids are a little older. You still need parent consent unless the child's 18. But especially for elementary school as far as that consent piece. And probably the parents want to be a part of it. Like we've never done this specifically with healthcare at, at elementary. I know at the middle school, right, we obviously have the health center there and they have a kind of a pretty good process as far as parent consent goes. So it'll be interesting in elementary is how we can raise the scale.
Yeah, I, I think it really resonates with people when you, you know, say all insurances are accepted and you have that sliding scale that maxes out at $35 per visit. That's, you know, makes it accessible to everybody. So I, I love, you know, the promotion. I think that's really important to make it successful. And then I just wanted to ask about the funding and the sustainability of that funding. It's always, you know, an issue for us as a, as a district. Like what is the source? Is it coming from our general fund at all? Is it a grant? If so, is it limited time and, you know?
So we are grant based. So we are a part of the larger Northwest Michigan Health Services. They are a federally qualified health center, so that's under a federal grant. We are under a separate funding for that. So the school-based health center is a state grant. So far, that has been very stable funding. We haven't had any concerns about that continuing. There's been really good bipartisan support for it and they've actually grown that over the last, you know, 10 years, pretty much every time it comes up, it, you know, it grows further. So there hasn't been any concern about like losing funding for that. But it is a state funded grant that helps keep our health center open. And then like you mentioned, we do still, you know, bill insurances and collect, you know, payment for visits when, when it's appropriate to help keep our doors open and, and things rolling as well. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that, that is helpful.
And we are, we've put, you know, quite a few different things in place to be able to really thoroughly track data. Quite a few different things so that we'll be able to have that to hopefully continue to get back to our stakeholders.
And I, I would just encourage the district to help promote it. Had a couple, a couple of times during the year, like right now it's peak vaccination season for the flu. So anyway, thank you, I think it's terrific.
We've just been rolling it out slow, so we haven't put it out district wide yet just to again, kind of work out those kinks. Our next visit, we, we have worked together to schedule some other buildings. So we're planning on rolling it out at East Middle School and then Cherry Knoll as well, so. And that will be my number ten.
Ready?
Thank you.
Vaccinations are available in so many places though, at the same time. So you kind of don't want to, you want the best bang for the buck of your time and your resource. You don't want to try to replicate something you can get at Myers.
For sure, yeah. And, and we definitely support them going and getting them wherever it's most convenient for them. That's why I said unfortunately, we can't bring them to them just because of all the rules surrounding immunizations. But we can, you know, just pull records and make them aware of what they need. We can help get on bus passes if they need help, you know, getting there. But like you said, flu shots and stuff, they, you know, you can get those at the local pharmacy if that's what's most convenient for them, so.
Great, thank you all, I appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Does the patient or you can go?
It's up to them.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, our next informational item is on the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency project and I will again defer to Misty Warner.
All right, thank you. So just a little recap here. Again, one of our main clinical areas of focus has been to increase mental health supports, specifically in buildings, with the goal being that buildings would fully utilize those supports to implement trauma-informed behavior systems. So through our partnership with NMCAA, we were able to place four school success liaisons in really key buildings, Trevor's Heights, Blair, Long Lake and Central Grade. And these liaisons work really closely with our mental health team to provide an extra layer of support and services to our families. And we have worked together to develop an aligned framework, including how our students are referred and then some criteria around the student success liaison's caseload. And that, that goal being just that the core of these supports and services are consistent throughout those four buildings. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy to talk a little bit more about the supports and services as well as share some program data with you. Thank you. So our program is a partnership, so we are run through NMCAA. And basically, there's kind of two components to the program. So providing formal support and that would be a student or family that is referred to the liaison. Our goal is to have a caseload of about 15 students at any given time and those students we're working really closely with. So we do an action plan and this is really collaborative. So we're getting input from the family, teachers and other school staff that are working with the student and we're getting input from that student as well as to their goals and what they would like to work on and improve to work toward success in school. So with those students and families, we're meeting one-on-one with the student. We're also maintaining at least bi-weekly contact with the family. One of our main goals is to really kind of increase parent engagement. So we're working with the family closely and then we're maintaining at least weekly contact with the student's teacher and then other staff that may be working with the student. So that could be like a member of the mental health team, Northwest Ed, anybody else that's kind of also working with the student on their goals. Informal support, so we're also working with students that maybe aren't on our caseload. This would look like doing kind of small groups. That could be like a social emotional targeted group or even like an academic targeted group. So like working on extra math practice, spelling skills, like a reading group. We're also having liaisons kind of push into classrooms to help maybe at times where the teacher is seeing like a need for extra support or with students that are needing extra support. We're also really focused on like proactive preventative. So helping with that tier one, social emotional support. Our liaisons are trained in restorative practices as well so they can assist with a restorative conversation, restorative circle. And then also our liaisons have gone through CPI training so they are able to help with behavior response and behavior intervention, student support requests as well. So here's some data from last school year. So across the four buildings, we had a total of 76 students and families that were on our formal caseloads. We work really closely with our formal caseload and informal students at times to address barriers. So we're looking at attendance improvement, improving social emotional skills and kind of those academic skills, executive functioning and that type of thing. And also navigating services and support, so kind of referring to community resources. The cool thing about our liaisons, since they're employed by NMCA is we've got a little more flexibility with kind of like our time. So if we need to kind of flex our hours, we can have liaisons working like outside of normal school hours. We're able to do home visits if that's something we can get the family on board with. So, and I know like last week, one of our liaisons was able to attend a Creekside visit with a family. So those types of things, we have a little more flexibility on that, which is helpful in kind of helping those, those families address those barriers. Like I said, parent engagement is one of our big goals. And so last year, we were able to have 95% of the parents for the students on our formal caseload participate in three or more school engagement activities. And this could be something like getting them to parent teacher conferences, getting them to like a family night or another school event, getting them to start communicating absences rather than not calling the school and not, you know, we don't know where the kiddo is. So that's something that we really continue to work on. We had 379 students seen informally last year. And so again, that could be like through our groups or just maybe these are kiddos that the liaisons are doing a lot of behavior response with, schedule breaks, check in, check out, that type of thing. And then the groups, there was 103 students that participated in small groups with school success last year. So a lot of those would be like friendship and social skills, social emotional type skills. And then we did heavily on running a Trails Tier One group for like K through 2 students. And then that school is also providing Trails Tier Two for the third through fifth grade. So it's kind of a cool base for those kiddos to be able to move into more learning for social emotional.
Amy, I wanted to ask you, how did you get 95% of parents involved?
So. So that's one of our main goals is we, we target at least bi-weekly contact with, directly with the parents. Oftentimes, that's more and we really just, we're just kind of persistent. I, yeah, I don't know, sometimes, sometimes we feel like telemarketers, like, like hello, it's us again. So lots of, yeah, lots of calls and texts, lots of just, and I mean, part of the thing with the program is if a student's going to be placed on our formal caseload, we do have a disclosure form that the families need to sign. And so right off the bat, we're kind of like getting that contact with them and we're kind of able to explain like, hey, you know, this is who I am. We are based in your child's building, but we work for NMCAA. This is what we can help with. And so really, it's just, I mean, that's probably actually the hardest part is getting that parent engagement back. But I think the flexibility with our time helps. We've got just like a little more time to kind of focus on that and kind of even like I said, work outside of maybe school hours if we need to, so that helps too, yeah.
So what I heard was phone calls and did she?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just a lot of outreach. And I think sometimes it can feel, for the liaisons, like maybe they're not getting a ton of engagement back. But when we look back at the numbers, like we actually were reaching those parents and kind of getting them more engaged, so.
I feel like that's one of the biggest differences that MTA provides, like as a, an extension of our school's social work is that, that parent engagement part, it used to be called wraparound services, which I still think probably exists in another agency. But it's that same idea where they go another step, especially when we talk about just supporting, it's supporting the whole family, not just the student. And I know attendance is, is a focus also with the students. Buildings will also utilize their NCA person to help. That could be our first sign, right? When we talk about any type of symptom that there's going to be some issue at school, right? We start to see those absences pile up. And it's just another layer that I think really makes them headway as far as that, like you mentioned, that parent-school connection.
Yeah, and I noticed you said on the previous slide that you have a caseload of about 15 students at any given time. But over the course of last year, you had 75 students total. So there's obviously some turnover within the year.
Yes, and that's kind of the goal. So really, the program is set up to be, to carry a student on your formal caseload for like 30 to 90 days. Obviously, sometimes that, it goes longer. But what's cool is it's not, if we're supporting a student kind of on that formal caseload, we could kind of move them off of that and still support them like on an informal basis. But then we have the opportunity to kind of add more to the caseload throughout the year. So our goal is really, I mean, we're really looking at, especially this year, trying to, for each liaison to have a total of like 20 to 25 students throughout the year that they're working with on a formal caseload.
There's, there's four, four schools, so it's 15 each.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Oh, God, yeah, so, okay, 16 at any given time.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, any other questions? You wanted to move forward, was there another slide?
Just, yes, did you have anything else to add?
No?
Okay, yeah. So, um so the, the initiatives that we talked about today, um along with some other work that we're doing, um they're, they're not just isolated projects, right? They are directly aligned um to our strategic plan. And I think the two that we discussed today really fall well under um this goal and focus area. When we're working to reduce barriers, increase access to supports and services, proactively put systems in place in buildings to um improve the overall health and wellbeing of, of our students. So thank you for letting us share some of our um work and projects with you guys.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, we will turn our attention to the learning series, the elementary fall data and strategic plan. Mr. Tiesworth.
Thank you. Uh so just some quick introductions to get us going. We have some guests here with us. So Hishen Elementary Principal Johnson Thwe- Thweegles is here.
Good morning.
Our Willow Hill Principal Angela Sides McKay.
Morning.
And then our Willow Hill and Cortate Instructional Coach, um Erin Yon Creek is here. So just to kind of help us go through how that, our data kind of lives in our elementary schools. So as Misty mentioned, um Jesse and I were talking about opportunities in board curriculum to kind of update the board on where we are uh with the strategic plan and how that looks in the building. So I thought I'd start out kind of looking at, this is a um admin meeting we did in elementary school to familiarize uh our elementary admin with the strategic plan, and then some ideas on how to take the ideas from the strategic plan and start to get them into buildings. Uh my experience, you know, with past strategic plans is we would work with them kind of at the beginning of the year in buildings, and they were often visible, but that constant connection throughout, and that reference to data. I think this strategic plan in particular obviously has a, um I think a stronger connection to data that we can continue to work in the buildings with, which, which helps, I think, accomplishes those goals. So just to kind of let you know, I know, Josie, you had some questions about what does it look like in the building? So this is our beginning to that, um looking specifically at Goal One. It's kind of what we wanted to highlight today, as long as obviously Misty just did Goal Two, um and how the principals work through it together. And then the idea of, you know, the, the very bottom there, what strategies can we implement at the building to level, um to support the goal, and then what resources, uh PD system supports do you need? So getting that feedback throughout the year, as we look at how do we, because we've often thought about, you know, in order to get to these robust data points, what do we need um to support the buildings with?
Yeah. How, so I'm just curious, how did that feel comfortable, like in terms of the strategic plan and li- aligning with your work? Seemed reasonable and achievable, but meaningful.
Yeah.
Outcomes.
Okay.
It's good to know, since the board really pushed for those targets to be.
Yes, for sure.
Ambitious. Okay.
So Goal One, uh just to, a- as we move into our fall data, our, our goal is kind of to take this fall data, show you the data, um and then kind of show you how the buildings use the data as it relates to our, our strategic plan. So just a quick review of what we're looking for. Specifically, strategic plan is our NWA data, that achievement for two-five. So we are still establishing, when I go through, I just have a, a couple of slides on our fall NWA datas that we're still establishing baseline. And I mentioned that using the spring data from last year might not be the most accurate start, because the norms have shifted every five years. NWA redoes the norms. So we've been working off of last spring, we're the twenty-twenty national norms. So now this is the first post-COVID norm reset they've done, the twenty-twenty-five norms, which is kind of aligns nicely to five years, right? Because if we do twenty-twenty-five through, I think we'll end up lying, probably leaving off around twenty-twenty-nine, and then twenty-thirties when they were doing norms again. Those norms won't shift again during our strategic plan, which is nice, because they can really, really make our data look wonky as far as what achievement looks like. So just a brief kind of recap of what NWA is for the board. Um there's MAP growth, so when we look at NWA, about how the student grows throughout the year and their change of RIT score, and how NWA projects that growth, usually within about five to ten RIT points. Um NWA is valuable, because it kind of gives us a starting point uh right off the beginning of the year, where we start to do our, our data meetings along with other data to, to help support kids, create tier-two groups, also to look at our tier-one. Uh that's something we've added in recent years, is that when we do our data meetings, we're not only creating tier-two intervention, but we're also looking at what steps can a teacher take in the classroom related to tier-one as far as addressing needs of students. So real quick, I just wanted to show you what it looks like with the norm shifted. So this is math. This is all of our grade levels. And if you look at the data, the, the top is uh this falls, the bottom is last falls. Um and we can see right off the bat, just if we look at some, some big numbers or indicators, we see instead of the yellows, we see greens on mostly all of our grade levels. Uh grade levels, the, the green is the average, which would be over, is over the sixtieth percentile, which is proficient. Um and then we see that in twenty-four, twenty-five, not all the grade levels had that. In fact, only two did. Then if you look however, if you go to the far right, you see the actual RIT score average itself. And compared to the year before, if we were to see that type of percentile change, we would hope to see, um you know, often a big jump in RIT also. And we see that if you look, right, the RIT scores actually move, they fluctuate maybe on average a point at the most, up or down. So that shows you the, the kind of the change of the norm, right? Is that in, if we look especially, let's look at grade zero or K, that includes our JK and K data, where we have a bump, it looks like of, trying to read on my computer, but I don't have my readers.
Fifty-nine to sixty-six.
Right, so we're talking about. No. Say, yeah, that's what. Uh seventh percentile as far as achievement goes, right? That's quite a jump. I mean, we're talking about kids that on average weren't proficient at fifty-ninth percentile. If we go to sixty-six, changing RIT score average of is just one point. So I think that, I just wanted to show that it's especially important uh going into this spring, that that is our actual baseline when we talk about, you know, our strategic plan.
Yeah, this.
So it's gonna look like we moved quite a bit, you know, but there is something also to be said. I don't want to say, hey, you know, this is all just because of norms. Obviously, we've worked as a district to stay in front of national norm data, right? As far as when we compare ourselves to the nation, we look better. I guess I think it's due to some of the processes that we've put in place lately, as far as instructional coaches, looking at data more closely, and I think, you know, informing instruction more with data.
Yeah. I was actually, so what you were saying is some of that fall twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, last year's data, just like the spring twenty-twenty-five data's, you know, a different um calibration. This is really not a great comparison, right, from year to year, is it?
Uh no, no, that's what I'm trying to show is that, so we'll, we'll see the same thing in the spring. That's why we want to use our spring data as our baseline for our strategic plan in twenty-twenty-six. And we can use twenty-twenty-five as our, as our baseline, but we're gonna see a natural five to eight percentile jump right off the get-go.
Right.
Um which will say, hey, we've, we're halfway to, you know, achieving our strategic plan. Um but a lot of that, I think, is, is some, some of that, if not a lot of that, is norm data.
Will we be able though to see that, that growth from fall to spring for this current?
Yes.
Yeah, school year. Okay, and then just that green and yellow column, uh where you see those percentiles, that second column, that's the median, not the mean, right?
Yes.
Those are medians. So do we, if, if we saw the average, do we know what that would look like compared to median?
It's an. Stat. Um it's all norm data, so it's a normal distribution. So your mean and median are gonna be pretty much spot on, right? It's not, right?
Yeah.
Well, Statistics 101, if it was skewed, then that's what pulls your mean, because it's non-resistant in one direction. But this is all norm data, so your median and mean. It is interesting, they use the median percentile and mean rate, but yeah. There's gotta be a reason why, but they should be close.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was curious about. Okay. So I mean, overall, the proficiency range in the fall of this year is, with the new calibration, is forty-seven to sixty percent. Yeah, I mean, that's, um we can live with, with that. I mean, it's a good start, right?
Well, for sure.
Yeah.
Yep. And so very similar to reading, where we see the same thing, right? Where we move up, the percentiles are all over the sixtieth percentile in achievement from this year compared to last. And again, with moving the actual average RIT score around a point either way. So this is one set of data, and we've talked already at board curriculum about how we are moving away from NWA reading in the uh winter, because we have some different data sets that we're using on a more regular basis, and one of those is AmesWeb. So we've talked about AmesWeb just as general, like what is, we're gonna get into the weeds a little bit on this, just so I can kind of, uh Brittany can give you a little bit of an introduction of what AmesWeb is, how we use it, and why. Um because it's important enough to us where we use it now as a natural part of our data meetings. And like I said, it's already kind of moved into, I wouldn't say more important, but a more usable data point in the winter than NWA.
Thank you.
Do you have roughly the same amount of coaching available in math as you do in reading?
As far as tier, are you talking about with the student or with the teacher? Because when we use the term coaching, I think of academic coaching. So academic coaching is, is when our, what, what Erin does, right? Erin works directly with teaching. So as far as how it spans our coaching time with math and reading, isn't really specified. We definitely have more tier-two support in reading with students. So when we, when we do our data meetings and we create groups, um we have, all of our, all of our buildings prioritizes their reading support first, and then we go back through and then do our math support. That's something with strategic plan. I've talked to elementary principals, and I think I've mentioned it here, as far as a need that we have when we talk about um some financial backing for strategic plan would be more support for math intervention.
But I'm, I'm, I wasn't specific enough. More the PD side, the professional development, coaching in for teachers. Do you have roughly equal amounts in both math as well as?
I think it's a more of a general coaching model, but I don't know, Erin, if you want to chime in just about, when, when you work with teachers in coaching, is it more around the reading or the math, or is it across the board?
It depends on the year. This year, because of the adoption of CKLA, we're more heavily leaning into coaching in, with relation to reading. Um same thing, though, with district-provided PD. It's more heavily focused on the CKLA adoption. In previous years, though, that adjusts and fluctuates depending on the focus and the need. So for example, last year, I would say my coaching time was split more supporting um the fluency work that was being done in math and science of reading work. So it really just depends on the primary focus of the district, and then we're there to support whatever that focus is.
And then do you also coach in science and social studies?
Not, no, no, we don't. We, it's primarily just the, the math and the reading.
Okay. Thanks.
And a lot of it, though, is instructional strategy-based, so that can carry into all content areas and is a subject-specific. Um but if it is more of the consulting role of our job, that focuses more on math and reading.
Thank you.
And just before we move on to AmesWeb Plus, I just wanted to point out, um you know, in addition to what I said about the math proficiency range of forty-seven to sixty percent, so it's slightly higher for reading. It was fifty to sixty-three percent of the students, yeah, so the reading scores overall are higher comparatively.
I think that is sort of normal. I think you see higher reading scores. Math tends to struggle.
Yeah. I would defer to Jesse and Dan on that, because I've seen it go both ways.
It fluctuates per grade level as far as where our reading, our reading and math proficiency goes and our support. We've seen lower L, sometimes we see, just this is a general, generality over years, um that math proficiency a little higher. And then as Erin mentioned, she, she coaches quite a bit with math and fluency, and as that fluency catches up, right? As students, if they don't have that fluency down, uh two- and three-digit addition, subtraction, their multiplication tables, and then they move into the, the fourth and fifth grade math with fractions and division, that fluency catches up, right? If they don't have that stuff down, those processes become much more challenging. So we definitely see sometimes a bit of a dip in proficiency in the fourth and fifth grade. Lately, with NWA data, we also, two years ago, had that shift I've mentioned with our math. We saw probably a five to ten percent bump in our math uh with proficiency in NWA, because they changed how they gave the test, right? So when they give the test on NWA, the question um changes as you get questions right or wrong. And as you got questions right in the past, what they would do is bump a grade level. So you would see, start to see questions that were from a different grade level. This is material most students haven't ever covered. They change it. Now that what it does is it takes the same grade level, it just goes a little more in depth. So we saw our students actually a little more successful on some of that math NWA.
Yeah. One more thing to note, too, with the fall data is that it's all, and the kids are tested like the second or third week of school. So they've had that summer slide, right? And I, and I feel like over the summer, it is easier for kids to read books, you know, than it is for them to, to practice their math.
Yeah, for sure. That's why we did fall to fall, right? The idea that I showed two sets of fall data is because they have the same summer slide from one year to the next, right? Showing fall to spring, obviously, we're, the kids were gonna see some growth. It'll be interesting when you talk about, because you, now that you can look at achievement percentile, but you can look at growth percentile.
Yeah.
Right? So there's a national norm also of how much our students grow. So we can look at that. When we look at our spring data this coming year, it's gonna look a little different than our previous years, again, establishing baseline. But we can still look at that growth percentile to see how we look compared to the nation and how much our students grow.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. This is great.
Okay, so as Dan mentioned, another key data set that we've really started to leverage within our benchmark data reviews is AmesWeb Plus. Um and so like Dan mentioned, we recognize that we haven't done a ton of learning around this particular data set, and when this data set is so critical to make instructional decisions, we wanted to just provide a high-level overview of what AmesWeb Plus is, why it's valuable, and how it works in partnership with our NWA MAP Growth data. So AmesWeb Plus, um we utilize it as universally, a universal screener. It is nationally-normed, just like NWA MAP Growth. Um and the key piece of the universal screening piece is, it helps us to identify which students are at benchmark um based on measuring indicators that are predictive, predictive of later reading achievement, based on the grade level. So for example, at the kindergarten level, um the measure that's most developmentally appropriate, that research says is predictor of later reading achievement, is the letter name, letter name influencing measure. Um additionally, with AmesWeb Plus, we not only use it as a universal screener, but we leverage that data set in addition to our diagnostic assessment data to then set appropriate progress monitoring goals that monitor how students are responding to the instruction or intervention we're providing that child um at normed appropriate rate of improvement. So it takes their baseline score at an individual level, you set the goal, and then we progress monitor on a bi-weekly or monthly basis, based on the level of intensive um intervention we're providing that child. Um so AmesWeb Plus is incredibly valuable, I think, to our kindergarten through fifth-grade staff, because it allows us to assess students um in a short period of time, and that's the key piece here um at multiple points throughout the year. So like NWA, we'll do it at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year to students, uh to students who are on track or at benchmark or not at benchmark. So how did we get here? So we picked up AmesWeb Plus as a part of our Read By Third Grade Law, and we used it um historically as a targeted benchmark. So we only would assess students that fell below a certain percentile threshold based on NWEA. We had since, we've since switched as a fall of twenty-four, twenty-five to a more of a universal screening framework. Um and the reason why we did that is because not only does it allow us to support all students, but it really allows us to focus on prevention and early identification of students in relation to those building blocks of reading and foundational skills such as phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency, because that is a missing element, particularly at grade second through fifth grade on NWEA MAP Growth. Um and so the way we generally do this is through a SWAT team approach across um our eleven elementary buildings. So we have a small team of calibrated individuals that assess our students on a one-to-one basis. So um uh timing-wise, kindergarten through first grade, it's about three to four minutes per student. Um second through fifth grade, it's about two to three minutes per student. And I would say, give or take, um it takes a building probably anywhere from two to three days to actually get through their entire K-five student body. And so um we leveraged key pieces of research um to really ensure that we were making the right decision and moving into more of a universal screening process. Um and so really, we see quite a strong correlation of our oral reading fluency data. So that's where a student in grades first through fifth grade are presented with two grade-level passages, and we track how many words correct per minute they can read in a minute, um words correct per minute in a minute time. Um and so the reason why we uh made a critical shift to administering oral reading fluency is because with oral reading fluency and reading comprehension, the correlation is a point nine one. So nine times out of ten, a student's oral reading fluency is gonna be a strong predictor of a student's reading comprehension, and there's forty-plus years of research to support that. Um in addition, um our oral reading fluency really helps to determine whether or not students are able to make that shift to make meaning, which is the ultimate goal of. whether or not students are able to make that shift to make meaning, which is the ultimate goal of reading. And so when we look at oral reading fluency, we're really looking to see the students who are meeting that fiftieth percentile threshold, because that's necessary for students to comprehend. But really, what's optimal is students that are meeting that seventy-fifth percentile or above. So as we're looking through that, we are trying to determine, can students read accurately and automatically at a rate that allows them to create more cognitive space to focus on what those words actually mean? So really, when we think about that connection specifically to our NWA MAP Growth results, it's really about bandwidth. So it's that recognition when students, word recall that's even accurate, but it's slow and labored, it's gonna come at a cost, because we can't create more bandwidth for kids. And so what we really generally see in most cases is that first kind of image up at the top. If students are spending a significant time on word recall, they're not gonna have a lot of cognitive desk space left to actually make meaning. And that shows, and sometimes that shows up in our NWA MAP Growth data, where we really want to leverage this data set to say, okay, we want students to be spending less time on that word recall, because it is so automatic, then they're able to spend the majority of their cognitive desk space on actually making meaning.
And sorry, Brittany, just to be clear, so when you say recall, this means the student recognizing the word and verbally, orally saying it?
Correct, yeah, by sight.
This is totally a oral test?
Absolutely, yeah, well, oral, well, they're reading, so they're reading print, yeah, but then they're producing that out loud, yes. So not silent reading fluency, yep.
Thank you.
So then like Dan mentioned, in terms of our current state with regards to NWA? Yes, absolutely.
I don't know that I read word, 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 word. I don't. If I did, I'd never be able to read them out that I do. So I think that as part of the science of reading is you learn how to organize going through page. And it's not just the words themselves, but it's the connections. And you retain, retain the idea that that page conveys, so that when you turn the page, you get to the next place. I guess I can understand all this, and I would assume it only works in, in real lower level elementary, correct?
So I would say a couple of things. One, I think to your point with regards to, it's so much more than just being able to recognize words automatically and accurately. That fluency is really a combination, when we think about kind of those theoretical models that are tied to the science of reading, it's really a combination of word recognition, it's a combination of understanding syntax and semantics, so that oral reading fluency kind of comes all together. We also recognize that when we silently read words, it's because we don't even have to think about some of the words that have automatically been stored, right? And so we just recognize it by sight, which is why you're seeing quite a shift in what we typically would have said as sight words, which are, you know, connected to the words we most commonly see in text, but really those are high frequency words. So my sight word vocabulary is very different than Jessie's, is very different than Erin's, because we have different understandings and what is actually ingrained in our long-term memory. So we don't even have to think about some of the words that we know, because we just, we know them from sight.
Right, right. So.
I was just gonna say, that's, I, when I've given oral reading fluency in the past, I also tell them like, you know, as a reader, you might skip words, right? But when you're doing something like this, you know, pay attention to that.
Right, so you're actually getting two different things, in a way, I think. I, I'm not sure it always represents an exact fluency with the language on paper. But, you know, I think about that a little bit longer. I, I don't know that the test is exact onto what you're looking for, but I, I could be wrong.
Just a quick question about this being evidence-based. I'm assuming, because I know how, you know, hard y'all work and thorough you are, but just to explicitly talk about the connection with our new curriculum. You know, how does this align with the, the science of reading and the CKLA curriculum?
So I would say it's, it's an alignment just because it is a critical part of our balanced assessment system. And so when we are teaching the foundational skills necessary for fluent reading, this provides us with a path of what kind, type of skills are our students coming with us? And then how do we leverage some of the curricular materials we have and curricular resources within the Amplify CKLA suite to help mitigate some of those gaps that are coming up, based on not only kind of whole group needs from a tier one standpoint, but then also how do we provide more intensive supports that are not only linked to this data, but also the evidence-based materials that we have?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, see, I, I kind of am of the mind that not everybody learns to read the same way. Any more than you see, everybody uses the same alphabet to represent their language, because they don't, creolic is very different from, from English. So I, you know, I, I take these as insightful, but I take it with a grain of salt. I sometimes am beginning to question more and more some of our assessment tools, and wonder if they are as robust as perhaps the variation people are capable of in learning things. I'm beginning to, to question some of the assessment tools. And at, at the most recent meeting, I really focused on attending sessions dealing with assessment and data, because I'm, I'm really beginning to think it's not all on the kids.
You're talking about the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference, okay.
And I will say, in terms of learning to read and the process that our brain actually takes in terms of building those neural pathways, that is the same across humans in terms of making those brain connections. What's different is the type of questions that, the type of instruction that's required to make those connections, and the repeated exposures that kids might need in order to build those skills accurately, but also really that, that automaticity piece. But in terms of the process itself, that, that is pretty, that is pretty similar across all, all humans in terms of how we learn, but the type of instruction that's necessary, and then a number of repetitions that are necessary, that's what differs from student to student.
I bet that there are several areas that we still don't understand.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's kind of, that's evolving as we continue to, to run and leverage some of the studies from cognitive science, so absolutely. So here is our current state with regards to our AIMS Web Plus data. So Dan kind of gave an overview of our fall twenty-five, twenty-six NWA MAP Growth, and here's our AIMS Web Plus oral reading fluency data. So this is first through fifth grade only, because they are the only ones that we administer oral reading fluency measures to. And you'll see a little bit difference in terms of percentile bands. AIMS Web Plus reports out on different percentile bands than NWA does. So the blue indicates the percentage of students across each grade level that are below the twenty-fifth percentile. The orange band indicates our percentage of students that are between that twenty-sixth and seventy-fourth, to really take into consideration that bell curve distribution. And then our students in the green, our percentage of students in the green are above that seventy-fifth percentile. And so you can see, when we think back to that research piece of that optimizing comprehension, we're really looking at the percentage of students above that seventy-fifth percentile. But if we were to take a little bit of the combination between that large average band, we're roughly sitting at about fifty percent of students that are above the fiftieth percentile per grade level, give or take, which directly correlates to the data that we're seeing right now on our NWA, which is around fifty percent, give or take, spanning first through fifth grade.
Could we see the data broken out by quartile, so that we do have twenty-five to fifty percent, fifty-one to seventy-four percent?
The way that it reports is it loops it all together, but we certainly can go through and correlate that even more of the number that are above. We would just have to go through.
And I'm not trying to, you know, create a burden here. I just was, you know, resonating with that, that previous slide that mentioned the fiftieth percentile is necessary for comprehension.
Absolutely.
So to me, that was like, okay, this is where we wanna be at a minimum, and then seventy-fifth would be, you know, even better for the optimal comprehension?
Yep.
So do you all happen, you probably don't know without then doing some further digging?
No, and I'm, I'm certainly happy to do that, to follow back up. I'll make note of that, and then we'll report that out to Dan and Jessie, so then they can then communicate that directly to you all, yes.
Again, if that's not gonna be a big investment of your time, I'm not trying to be burdensome, just comparing it to that prior slide.
Absolutely. So then, kind of thinking about, we've gone through our two large data sets that we generally leverage during our tier one and tier two data reviews with NWA MAP Growth and AIMS Web Plus. But we know that just having access to relevant and meaningful data doesn't actually move the needle. It's creating some sacred time systems and structures in place to review that data. And so we've worked really hard, particularly in our elementary buildings, on how we create consistency and coherency in our tier one and tier two data review meetings across all sites, and we do that intentionally three times a year after our benchmark windows close. All of our buildings utilize our research-based protocol, got data, now what? And the data sets, like I spoke to earlier, that are primarily leveraged are that MAP Growth, AIMS Web Plus for ELA, and then Delta Math for Math as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Angela and Erin to speak a little bit more about how that process plays out within the context of their building in particular.
Thank you. So the graphic that you see indicates, it's just an overview of the protocol that we use. And so just to set the stage a little bit about what happens at data review meetings, that we, we actually create time in the day where grade level teams sit down for sixty to ninety minutes with both Erin and me. And at Willow Hill, we have two to three at each grade level, probably similar to Eastern. And, and so we get together and we look at the data. We primarily start with NWEA as our data set, and we, in this protocol, we wanna activate and engage teachers focusing in on the data. And so one way that we do that is that we start with an overview of the district level data. We'll show what district level is, and then ask them to make some predictions about where Willow Hill performed across the bands. And it was, it, it's always really interesting to see how our, how our teachers make those predictions, because they each walk in kind of knowing their own data set, but they don't know the total grade level. And we wanna focus on tier one of the total grade level, first and foremost. So they have to, they have to kind of put their heads together and think about what that looks like. And then we actually reveal the data to them. And, and I will say, when we're looking at predictions, we're also trying to predict what would be our areas of highlight, where we did really well, our strengths, and what would be some areas for some growth. And so they also have to predict that. And then when we actually unveil, unveil the data in phase two, they're gonna explore and discover and actually look at their data sets and, and start to see if they can just make some narrative statements. You can't justify what you see in the data or question it, you just have to make a narrative statement. Seventy-five percent of the kids performed X in area X. And so, hmm, that's interesting. We collect that information together, and then we start to sort it a little bit more and try to think about, okay, of those narrative statements, what might be a priority moving forward between now and this next window in January? And the teachers will, they'll work collectively with us. I'm pleasantly surprised, Erin, you can chime in. I mean, I, I do think that they really challenge themselves, and we, and look for those areas that are gonna be most impactful on their tier one students. You can't focus on everything, but what could be an area that might move the needle for your students? And so then we organize those priority statements into trying to find a causal theory around what's, what's happening? Is there something in the infrastructure, of the calendar of the day, the schedule? Is there something happening with the curriculum? We have a new curriculum in CKLA, which is a bonus. Is there curriculum need, is there instructional need? Are we, do we need to focus in on a particular aspect of instruction, like how students are being asked to respond, how they're being asked to show what they know? And then finally, maybe there's a teacher skill set that we need to look at. And so we actually sort out what could be action steps that align to those underlying areas. And then we, we really work with the teachers about further prioritization around, and we have a quadrant that we look at around, you know, what, what would be the best use of our time and energy? We have quick wins, we have long-term projects, those two seem to have the highest payoff. But then you have those thankless tasks or things that just really don't apply. And so we really try to focus the teachers' problem solving into those quick wins. What's something we can do that may, maybe if we just refine it a little further is gonna have a bigger impact on kids? And so then that creates some action items from there. So engaging in this process, really rooted in the data, and it's coming from the teachers about the students that they work with every day and the resources that they have available, I think has been a really powerful shift in how we do things. And the fact that we dedicate this time three times per year for reading and math is really exciting as we move forward in measuring it with the strategic plan.
I was just gonna ask about, is, is it enough? Is it just right? Is it too much, you know, in terms of interacting with the teachers? And make it meaningful and motivational and, and all that?
I think at this point, it is just enough, because it then sets the stage for the next level of work. And it actually then gives them time between assessment cycles to, to do the work. And I think that Erin and Jonathan are gonna get into that a little bit further. But just so, to have all of our elementaries aligned around using a consistent protocol, and it may vary a little bit by building, but for the most part, this is what, this is what we're doing. And our K-five, everybody's involved, JK-five, everybody's involved in, in looking at this data.
Good thing we don't have a new math curriculum right now.
Yes.
Yes.
Not yet. Couple of years.
I, I will add though, just in a, in a CKLA lens, what's really exciting to see is that some of, many of our areas of action that we looked at at our building, CKLA looks like it's gonna fit the need. And so we're really excited to just lean into that new curriculum and see how it can shift student learning.
Yeah, and not to be a negative, Nellie, that's not my intention here, but for the, you know, the subpopulation of teachers who weren't admittedly excited about CKLA, who had some concerns, how have you been able to work through those? If one of you wants to just touch on that briefly, because I know that was a strategy.
Well, it's work in progress. I, I don't know the, the difference between, as far as not excited or overwhelmed, right? I think there are two different things. I think there's a level of excitement with everybody that we had a like structure that, that everyone was doing in every, every elementary building, right? So you have that support that we can give as a district now. I think when you start any new curriculum, as much as you can front load it as much as humanly possible, there's still an element of newness to it, and the first year is always hard, right? The first year is hard with pacing, the first year is hard with new assessments, even things that come up that we have not anticipated that we have to address. And when you talk specifically, I often refer back to this story of pilot teachers. Pilot teacher meeting last October was a tough, was a tough meeting, right? They were overwhelmed, a lot of information. We weren't used to teaching ELA this way. But when you turn that over and know what our pilot meeting looked like in the spring, it was night and day, right? Excitement, kids are excited about it, kids are engaged. So we're gonna see something similar, right? We're ready for that RSTD day in November, where teachers are gonna come there, and there's gonna be an element, they're overwhelmed. So we're gonna try to curb that a little bit with, trying to celebrate with teachers of what we've seen so far, but also have that voice of the pilot teacher saying, hey, we were in this exact same spot a year ago. And, and teachers know this, right? There's, even though you have that element of being overwhelmed, they know that they've done this long enough with a new curriculum that it will get better.
Yeah, in the long run, it'll be worthwhile.
It does, yeah.
The other thing I'll add, just to piggyback off Dan, is that I think what we tried to be really intentional about is that we all play a role, so it's more of this collective front. You know, historically, what we generally see with the new curricular, adoption of a curricular resource is we purchase the curricular resource, we provide the, we provide materials, and then it really falls on the shoulders of teachers. And we've really tried to ensure that we all play a role and responsibility, and making sure that we're all clear on that role. So it's really more of that collective effort and not just resting on the shoulders of our teachers. And we've been really intentional to try and create a, a space where teachers provide feedback, where we're in classrooms and seeing the implementation, lifting up areas of support, where we can provide more consistent guidance across the board.
Yeah, maybe you could talk about what you're doing currently, visiting?
Yes, so we just wrapped up our first week of our CKLA district-wide visits, where I have gone in and I partner with the building leader and instructional coach. And we go in to randomly selected classrooms to go and utilize our non-evalued to look-for document to provide insight into how implementation is going, and then how we use that data to adjust the supports we're providing district-wide. What's been really great about that is, I would say, probably about ninety to ninety-five percent of teachers wanted a copy of the feedback form, it was optional. So I just think it shows their investment and, and their want and... So I just think it shows their investment and their want and need to feel supported and implement the high-quality curricular resource well.
And the more you systematize in our district our size, eleven elementaries, almost four thousand elementary students, then the district can support. If you have people doing different things in every classroom or even at different spots, pacing-wise, right now, if you go into second-grade classroom anywhere in the district, you're going to probably be, correct me if I'm wrong, but within a week of each other. So even principals have told me this also, when they have several different sections of second grade, you can literally just bounce through in a day and they're doing the same lesson. And so this is a large shift in what we've seen in ELA, I believe, over the last ten years.
And I think the clarity of focus, like it is very clear what we're focusing in on, and I would hope nobody feels alone in implementing this because there are so many levels of support and check-ins and opportunities to collaborate around it.
And I'd say, too, with this process, it felt very different this year in our ELA data meetings than it did in previous years. Where when we were brainstorming in previous years, there was a level of just frustration from teachers in the sense that they knew what students needed, but they didn't have the resources to meet those needs. And so it was pulling from here and there to meet those needs. And so this year, it felt very different because the entire meeting for every grade level centered on CKLA. And people saying, well, if this is the area of focus, I can use this resource, or this could supplement, or not even supplement, but support that. And everything that they were drawing from directly was a CKLA resource. And so they just felt, I need to lean in heavily to the core tier-one program that we've been given, and there was a level of excitement that that would happen. So it just, it left people with finally feeling like, okay, I can do this. Yeah, it's hard work, but I have the tools to do it now.
Do you think that you'll see the same level of improvement across all the schools, given that you're using the same level of intensity and the same organization? Are you going to be able to work, in effect, a manufacturing model in reading across the district successfully through all the buildings? Does that make sense?
I would refer back to, I know that Brittany did some presentation on CKLA where we talked about students economically disadvantaged, right? Because if we want to see that model across all of our schools, you know, that's a little bit of the flexibility of CKLA, that within each school, right, we have economically disadvantaged students, and we need to impact them.
On different plans, or, you know, 504. Unless it's the same distribution through all the schools, because I think it's more than just economically disadvantaged.
I just went to that because that's my, I agree. I mean, we obviously have a tier-two segment or any segment that doesn't necessarily have economically disadvantaged students who are struggling, but just in general, because that's our measurement on our strategic plan. We talked about how CKLA can impact students that are economically disadvantaged, and I think, I thought the question was, you know, is that impact just as impactful to economically disadvantaged as to non? And we've seen it's more. So that's why we hope that, you know, when you implement it to all schools, we hope to see that manufactured approach. But in the same way, I go back to the fact that if we systematize anything, we can actually support it. If we are not systematized, we waste resources, we waste time, we waste time on PD. And be able to do that with all of our schools, and even just United, as we span from elementary to secondary, we try to get everybody's lockstep because every single dollar is valuable. We want to make sure we're efficient in those dollars and not just saying, okay, do a little project that's not research-based, but it feels good to do. Does it push the needle as far as the achievement goes? Then we can systematize it.
Yeah, and I would just add, research-based programs provide the best opportunity for all kids across all these different landscapes. That's the idea of them. Sort of like you look at, I don't know, you're, I'll kind of lean in the medical field, but you're going to correct me, I know. There's research-based diets, right? That we would say, we would recommend all humans have this type of a diet, and that would, does it work for every single individual? No, there'll still be students who will need either additional support or additional extensions because we're humans and there's some variability. But the goal would be, because we've adopted a research-based program and we're using it together as a system, it gives every kid the best opportunity to be set up, to be successful, and develop the skills they need.
I would also add that each of-
Grab me on my diet comments, okay?
I know, I'm going to let, that wouldn't be-
Okay, good, thanks.
Actually, the diet stuff is getting a major challenge right now.
Yeah, I was going to say, too, that each of the teams, each of the instructional teams are focusing on their data set, and they know their students. And so we have this consistent program and protocol for working through the data, but that school team are empowered to create the plans, based off of what the need or the action is showing.
Keep following, basically, the schedule, because that was the one thing I was hearing when I was going to the teacher meetings, and obviously I didn't get through every one, but it seemed that it was the pacing for some of the teachers that they were having more of a question about. And that's why I was just kind of wondering, because some of them were told, no, no, stay with the program, don't, don't drop back and put yourself on a different timeline. And that's why I'm thinking of it as manufacturing model. Everybody's coke bottles going through the machine.
Yeah, okay. But also, that's where instructional coaches and principals and Brittany can help if a teacher is falling behind, of really look at those focus priority standards and objectives within whatever unit or lesson they're in, and then look at the lesson and help, you know, partner with the teacher about maybe what, what could maybe be removed from that lesson and still hold the integrity of what the focus objective's supposed to be.
And at the same time, the teacher's in the middle because she's responding, or he is responding to the kids that are in the classroom, so, yeah, it's a balance.
All right, so, from, yeah, thank you. From the data, whoops, from the data meetings, I didn't know we had advanced. Then, then I think the real meat and the boots on the ground happens of, okay, we've made these plans, now what?
And I think, looking at the focus and the purpose of the data protocol, we've used Got Data Now What for a while in our district. It's not anything new, but how it's used has changed. When this was first brought forward in the district, we didn't have the coaching model in place. And so often, you might do this protocol during, let's say, a PLC meeting or at a staff meeting. And it did feel, on the teacher's side, a little bit more of that one-and-done task. You would get your data, you would come up with a plan, you would look at it again, but it wasn't as connected, where now it really is this focus on continuous improvement. And so I see the role for myself in the coaching position that these meetings are integral into what I do throughout the entire school year. And in terms of supporting the process, it really starts with collecting the data. And so we are working with the building leaders, the interventionists, to make sure that we're gathering data, whether it's NWA or Ames Web or Delta Math on every single student, and then compiling all of that data. And so that takes the first few weeks of school, of just spending hours, you know, data collecting and compiling it. And then when it comes to the meeting itself, it's really sitting down and facilitating the conversation and really letting the teachers' voices be brought to the forefront. So it's wonderful that we have this protocol and a template to follow with that because it helps us surface the right questions to ask to keep the process moving and keep it focused. When you pull a group of grade-level teachers together at a common time, it's very easy for them to want, to go off on tangents and solve all the world's problems, but it's not the best use of time if that's where they go. And so we are very strategic about staying within each phase and bringing them back to the conversation so that we are moving forward and making change happen. So highlighting teacher voice is incredibly important, and also keeping it grounded in the data. And so there will be times where they might surface something they're observing, but we'll bring it back to which narratives, which narrative statement, you know, you brainstormed really supports what you're seeing right now. So that has to be centered and grounded in the data so that we can track that moving forward. Once we have the plan, then, there is a lot of monitoring that can happen throughout. So it really launches into many authentic coaching opportunities, and those can look different depending on the individual or the need of the individual teacher or even the grade level. Sometimes it is more collaborative in nature, maybe we're sitting down and planning and looking ahead at pacing, for example, like Angela mentioned, where we want to sit there and pull out the primary focus and help them with that. Other times, it may be working as a consultant. This year, I feel like in our fall data meeting, that was an important part of my role because there were resources that they had not had time to dig into. Right now, they're looking at the basic lesson plan, and they're not able to spend time looking at the other incredible things that are available to them. In addition, it's really looking for those authentic cognitive coaching opportunities where we can sit and have conversations to mediate thinking, where we can sit there and see and ask and engage in a conversation with a teacher, where they might highlight something that we can grab onto and ask another probing question that might get them just to shift their thinking in the slightest way. We want to see those rapid cycles of improvement. So however we can support that through our coaching cycles, that's really at the heart of what we're doing. But it keeps having to come back to the work that is surfaced through these meetings. And then, earlier it surfaced, do we feel like this is enough, these three touchpoints? And I would say yes, because it isn't just these three touchpoints. After the dad, official data meeting is done, there's a lot of follow-up work that happens, whether it's a coaching cycle, or oftentimes, for example, I go and schedule a midpoint check, just like we do with tier-two data reviews, where I'm scheduling an official time even to go back and circle within those three times a year benchmarks to check in with individual teachers or grade levels. How's it going? This was your area of focus in the fall? What progress are we making? What adjustments do we need to make currently so that we can, you know, continue on target for the winter? And so I think it's really just being able to be that fluid-thinking partner with them to help keeping the focus right at the forefront and not getting bogged down in the trenches of just the day-to-day instruction, because it's easy to have that happen when you're in the classroom. You have a lot on your plate, and so if we can take some of that off and help kind of remove some of that cognitive overload for them, then I feel like it's been very successful.
And that is for reading and math?
Yes.
Because we've done data reviews for both, and I would say for the three days at Willow Hill, you know, we were supporting seventeen teachers. And making sure everybody has the right level of support is a concerted effort on Erin's part, and I think so far this year, she's done a really good job of balancing that.
Next.
Next.
So what happens after our tier-one meeting? So we've heard it mentioned a couple of times already, just that continuous cycle of improvement, right? So no matter what organization we're in, like we have something, so just the simple plan-do-check-act model, it might look something in different organizations, but plan is just where we're setting that goal. I'll get into that in a second. That's really our tier-one meetings. The do portion, we're just going to leave that tier-one meeting, and we're going to go do the thing, right? Like we make a plan, work a plan. And then the check portion, so for example, what Erin's talking about, just, you know, variety of check-ins, whether it's informal or formal. We have a formal one coming up next Tuesday, we'll have another one in December, and then at that December one, and then probably on going into January a little bit with our winter benchmark, is just, you know, what's working, let's continue that, what's not working, let's be a little more intentional about maybe what's not working and see if we can shore some things up. So when we leave that tier-one data review, as Angela said, you know, we're looking at our strengths, we're looking at areas of growth, and then, of course, we want to celebrate the things that kids are doing well, but we also want to really focus in on what are some things that we can do that are going to have high impact. So, for example, if, you know, our group of, I'm going to use a second-grade example today, so we'll just stick with second grade, you know, instructional or informational text is always kind of an area of need, right? Just not a lot of exposure, for the most part. So what second grade decided upon is, you know, we're going to pick this standard of reading with accuracy and fluency for comprehension. So that's second grade to third grade, we know that once we get into third grade, that, you know, reading to learn is going to be the primary focus, so we really need to get kids to the point where we can read a text, we can comprehend that text, so on and so forth. So then we go in and we set a SMART goal in terms of, you know, what subgroup are we really looking at that we want to kind of move the needle on? So for this particular group, that group between the twenty-fifth and the sixtieth percentile, that's the group we're going to really focus on in terms of their fluency scores, and then we're going to use aims to kind of measure that work, and then our timeline is December twelfth, as noted. And then strategies, we're going to use CKLA fluency resources. Again, as I mentioned a number of times, it's so nice to just be able to sit in the room with, you know, three to four teachers and everybody have the same resources at their disposal so you can plan together. And then I'll even highlight, we've had to dig in, not had to dig in, but show like, hey, have you heard about the CKLA intervention toolkit? Because teachers are obviously like overwhelmed, that they haven't even dug into that yet. So again, it's also nice that we have these tier-two potential resources as opposed to going outside of what we're doing, you know, for example, teachers for teachers, et cetera. And then we also have boost reading, which is individualized to the kid, so that's really nice, and I'll talk about how we use that in a second here. And then planning, I don't know about you guys, but planning's been something that we've had to shift in our building, with sections of three, and then second grade has four, there's not a lot of time for teachers to plan altogether. So looking at recess schedules, who's covering recess? You know, next year, it's looking at special schedules, and can we utilize that? Try to leverage where every grade level has the same special at the same time. So again, there's layers to this for sure. So then we get into that do portion, right? We want to go and execute that plan. So one of the teacher actions that second grade came away with was utilizing that intervention pull-out time to pull small fluency groups. So within our daily schedule, each grade level has an intervention time. So that's when our interventionists are pulling tier-two kids, they're working on specific goals within that particular group, and then the students who stay in the classroom, that's when teachers are pulling small groups. They'll also utilize boost at that time, which is a component of CKLA. That's a digital resource, they're on the Chromebook, and they're working on skills that are very specific to them. So it's a really, really impactful time. And then we talked about, and Angela talked about, just, you know, what can we cut, right? Dr. Nita Archer, we talk about her all the time, she's a guru of instructional strategy, cut the fluff and teach the stuff, right? Because one, one thing we've heard is, this takes a lot of time. I don't have a lot of time. So what can we remove that still keeps the integrity of the lesson, but also other components of our day that we really need to look at? And, you know, we do have a deimplementation plan of what are some things that we can get rid of so that we can provide the appropriate amount of time for CKLA. And then just some student shifts, too, right? So specifically geared towards what's our focus, what are our students going to be doing? So for second grade, you know, spelling practice daily, partner reading with decodables that come with the curriculum that support the skills lesson, but it's also embedded into just that reading component throughout the day. And then weekly, teacher-led small groups for our cusp-y kids, and then that boost reading practice during the intervention time is being utilized effectively.
Jonathan, can I just ask you about the fluff? I mean, that sounds great in theory, but it makes me think about all the stuff that we're trying to do to build connectedness with kids. So it might not be academic-driven, but goal-to-driven. Is that the kind of fluff we're talking about here?
So fluff is, as Dr. Nita Archer would say, what they're hearing is what they're learning, right? So if we're talking about things or sharing things that aren't connected to the lesson, then those are the types of things that we have to really be intentional about and remove. So there's time for connection, right? Morning meetings, time for connection. If we have a connection to the content, like that's absolutely time to add that in. So for example, one of our fourth-grade teachers, fourth grade, they're talking about polio, right? So our fourth-grade teacher has some connections to that with family, right? So those are really good things, but it's not necessarily storytime outside of the content that we're talking about, right? So- So kids are learning about what they're hearing.
I have a new motto, cut the fluff, teach the stuff.
Well, it's helping teachers too. You know, implementation is one skill set, deimplementation is another. And sometimes we have activities during the day that are just things we've done for years and are really no longer backed by research and not supported by our new program. So it's being able to give that permission to, you know, free up that 15 minutes because you can use it in this other way.
And then Erin, your delightful job would be as a coach, observing that and having to deliver that feedback.
It's in tandem.
It's, yeah.
Since, you know, you have to have that fine balance too because the role of the coach is nonevaluative. So you have to be able, yes, we are in the classrooms a lot and we can ask some of those questions to highlight. You know, how is that activity supporting, you know, this learning target that you're working towards? And so you can subtly address it in a coaching conversation, but also there are times where that's more the role of the administrator.
I would say the fluff also, last point on this, the fluff could also be in terms of not just time, but the resources within the room. And so really being mindful of how wall space is being used because we have some strong visual components for this program. And again, only so much visually that should be on the wall or on the page that the student's working on. So just having those really fine point conversations.
Very directed, but hopefully, God willing, engaging. Because a kid can tune out and you are not even aware of when they started.
And there has been good feedback on the engagement piece. Within the knowledge portion of CKLA, I think one concern is kids are sitting for sustained periods of time. But at the same, you know, at the same token, like that's also stamina. Kids are just going to have to build their stamina into that. And we saw that last year with the pilot programs as well. So it is engaging. I can, you know, outside of this, my own daughter, like she can speak to the engaged portion and, you know, sharing stories with me at home. So it's going to do its thing. So in the check portion, just progress monitoring. Brittany alluded to progress monitoring with AIMS Web, so our tier two students, they're progress monitored every other week. And it's a really nice tool to have because it is a pretty sensitive assessment in terms of showing student growth. And it's also nice to have at our disposal if we have a student that, you know, we might want to monitor every week just to get a few more data points in terms of where they're at. So as noted, next Tuesday will be that kind of initial PLC where teachers are going to bring that data based on what they left that tier one meeting with back in October or September.
Can you just speak, because I know PLC, they're a little different this year. Can you speak to that a little bit, how they look compared to previous?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, you know, speaking from personal experience, you know, I don't know what was happening at Eastern prior to my arrival, but just in the two and a half years, and I say two and a half because I sat through the first tier one and then after that, I was talking with our instructional coach, Ms. Obrandovic, and I was like, hey, here's kind of what I'm envisioning for tier meetings and then how we can utilize that to the best of our ability. So just in the three years that I've been at Eastern, like we've made so much progress as a district in terms of how we're doing PLCs. Last year got a little wonky just because it turned into a little bit of some PD with the science of reading and that's understandable just because we have a finite amount of time. But going forward, you know, removing it from a, you know, after-school activity where cognitive load and teachers might be a little bit more difficult, you know? We're learners too, to moving that this year into the school day. We've received some positive feedback on that. You know, we're available to learn, attending to intend and collaborating with our colleagues. So just really excited about that. And then just having this model to use going forward in terms of, you know, everybody has a focus area, everybody's collecting data, we're bringing that data, we're having vulnerable conversations with one another. You know, if my data looks differently than yours, what did you do, Sarah, that I didn't do? Then maybe I can replicate my own classroom. So just having those vulnerable conversations, I think, is going to be really important too.
I think it just highlights too that professional development can look many different ways, right? And when we look at professional development, it doesn't have to be a sit and get, bring in a speaker, right? That's part of our professional development. But this, I think our PLCs are probably one of the, if not the most powerful professional development we have because it's so learner-based, right? The teachers have an interest that's based on data. I think PLC sometimes is group of, like in the past that I've been exposed to the last, you know, almost 30 years here, T-CAPS PLCs look very different. But, you know, if we can base some PLC in data, I think that gives more of a purpose and kind of provides that structure every time they meet. So it's focused on, you know, that data aspect.
Yeah.
If I could add, it's also what we're seeing already in the revamp of PLCs this year is that I think it's surfacing some different teacher leadership voices within the grade teams, which is really exciting to see. And in our first PLC, we, you know, I had grouped them by grade level just for us to get started. And really, it turns out my third, fourth, and fifth grades are all kind of working on the same thing. So they could probably do a little bit more collaboration for the next two cycles of this round, so.
And it's honoring the work that they've already done through the data review process because many of them were walking out of the data review meeting saying, I wish I had time now just to continue this work, but I've got to go back into the classroom. And it was really refreshing to be able to have that first PLC so soon after that data review where then they could continue the work that was established in that data meeting as part of their PLC work and have dedicated time of intentional collaboration. And that isn't always feasible when we don't have as many touchpoints with each other.
And I think that's been helpful by into just that shift into, you know, the end of the school day and early releases. Because I think if teachers know, you know, we're dedicating time to this, it's a priority for us, they're going to be more likely to, you know, collect the data that they need to have those conversations with their fellow colleagues. So it's been really good. So just continuing on with this, again, next week, Tuesday, we'll have that first look at data. We'll analyze, we'll talk about what's working, what's not working. We'll make some shifts if needed. And then culminating in that December 12th meeting where we'll, you know, make some final decisions in terms of, yep, this really went well, we want to continue that. How can we potentially scale that? And then if, you know, we didn't see the growth that we wanted in a particular area, you know, as Angela noted, like what's the cause of that? So just continue to have some conversation around that. And then we'll just act, again, I kind of just alluded to that. You know, after December 12th, determine if we met our goal. Hopefully, we'll see an increase in oral reading fluency amongst our second graders. And then next steps, just standardize, you know, what worked, let's scale that. What didn't work, let's refine it, let's continue to look at that. And then just document those moving forward to the next PLC cycle, which will happen in the spring. So it's been really good so far. I think people are excited about it, about some vision and some guidance for us, so.
Great. Just one quick question about adjusting the plan, you know, going forward with this cycle. So is the district looking at compiling like some lessons learned from different buildings? Because obviously within a building, you're going to have your lessons learned and adjust your plans. But maybe sharing that information from building to building, if that is helpful?
So we do that. So elementary principals meets monthly face-to-face. So our next elementary principal meeting is actually after the PLC in November, after RSTD Day. We're going to do our first PLC debrief because we do have principals that I think everyone is in that, using that data from their first data meeting. From there, some of them, for instance, are doing a PLC, which they, their cycle that Jonathan was talking about is three PLCs, so they do two sets of three. Some principals do three sets of two. So they might do a plan, check it, and then redo another plan, check it. So there's some different models out there. But that's a, you know, with 11 of us, just to be able to share that information. And I know secondary is obviously with their PLCs, they're going to do something similar.
Cool. Very good. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for that great presentation and discussion and indulged in all of our questions. So moving on, the agenda, next thing is other items, but I really know it's celebrations and successes, so.
Take it away, Jesse.
It is. And I know you guys might have been sad because you didn't hear a lot of secondary data today, but December 2nd, our board curriculum, you were wondering. Oh, I'm already, we don't miss a beat. The next one is secondary.
I can't wait. We get to prepare all in November. We will be together November, everybody. Maybe we'll meet anyway.
Absolutely.
If you wish, if you wish. Your wish is my command.
So, yeah, the plan is on December 2nd. We just knew there was enough in here around the strategic plan that there was no way we could get both in one board curriculum meeting. So on December 2nd, we'll see some secondary principals here and we'll be doing some sharing around each of the strategic goals. Misty kind of overlaps with both of us and so she was able to sort of hit some of that. So no, that's coming. Okay, celebration and success. First up is just our music program, our marching bands on both sides of town, outstanding. They've been working really, really hard, both of our directors, Chad and Thomas, doing a great job. So they get out there, they like to tour middle schools, just make those connections to those students in that program. And it's always a really fun experience for our middle school. So here's a shot of our central high school marching band visiting East Middle School and giving them a little show there.
Just a shout out there to Mr. Ranger at East, just the work he's done on branding and that.
Yeah, you can see that in that gym.
Have you been in East Gym this year?
No. With the whole, you know, Ryan did a big sort of cleanup this summer with painting and branding and logos throughout the entire building, really trying to move from the turquoise and the tambour walls.
Yeah, yeah.
To the roses.
Down in the PE area, the tile is turquoise. I told Christine I could spray paint and she said, no.
Stay in elementary, Dan.
I wanted to get rid of the turquoise. Indigenous Peoples' Day, so similar to last year in the elementary, we did book readings with a set lesson and a video that we did for every classroom. So the books were different for every classroom as far as grade levels go. But the intro video was the same. Again, we helped with any pronunciation of the Inishina'abe that they needed for the books. So we, and worked together with the social studies committee, came together for a day, double-checked as far as cultural appropriateness goes and also had a member of the tribe at the meeting. So overall, successful that I've heard, great work by our team and our social studies teachers.
And our indigenous coordinator was there in addition to the tribe member too, to help organize this too. And then here's a shot of our secondary, so same. All of our students were exposed to a cultural appropriate lesson on this day as well. So some photos of that learning going on.
So CKLA at Westwood, this is a kindergarten classroom, Mrs. Laughters, working on nursery rhymes and just kind of that interaction that the kids have with the curriculum. This is from the classic ba-ba black sheep.
Have you any wool?
Yes. Things change, they say the same.
And here's a photo of our West Middle School STEM students. They've really connected to some local manufacturing companies and were able to sponsor a visit there where they were able to explore different careers and learn about different manufacturing, things going on in our area. So it was a really cool experience. I heard really great things about that. Oh, Brittany.
I know. So if you're wondering, that's Dr. Anita Archer, as Jonathan mentioned, or Mr. Swiegels mentioned earlier. So she led a couple of different sessions at the National Reading League Conference, which was hosted in Chicago. A group of administrators, our district DLA coach, Kelly Obrandovic, who also serves as the instructional coach over at Eastern Elementary in Montessori, as well as a couple of staff members at Long Lake, were able to join in learning surrounding the science of reading and really thinking about how we can better improve our systems and structures surrounding how to bridge that gap between theory and practice. So it was a great time, lots of learning, a lot of good reaffirmations that we're moving in the right direction.
And then we talked about Amy Cole earlier with the field trip, but this is a total different honor that she has received from the University of Chicago. They asked their incoming freshmen, who's been an impactful educator? And then as they sift through those applications, they like to connect back with those educators and highlight that, hey, students who had you are now saying this about the importance of being in your class and the learning and the connection. And we've had a few educators from both of our high schools receive this. It's a great honor, it is selective. So congratulations and kudos to her. I know how hard she works to really provide great, great level of instruction and care for our kids, so.
And you wanted to speak to this one, Erin or Angela? Well, some team building as part of their PLC and also some data meetings.
Yes, the PLC overview at the staff meeting, what was a really fun way to start our PLCs was with a basic team building activity to illustrate the importance of the different roles on a team. And then our data meetings that we described in action. I'm not in those because I was taking the picture.
And then some more robotics photos here. So our IMC up at West Senior High is really being heavily used, not only by our West Senior High students, but also our students from West Middle School. They've got a great partnership and our students from Montessori, they are using that space on a regular. I was talking to the coach, Dan, and he really tries to work to create a schedule so that he's got lots of access for all those different groups. And it's nice for our high school students as part of their requirements of the robotics program. They have to mentor, they get to mentor younger students within the district. So those spaces have created great opportunities for that. I would say if anything, there's maybe a little bit of tension because everybody wishes the space was bigger and had more resources for everyone to use. But they've been really widely used at both of our high schools.
And shout out here to Danielle Brostrom, our TKFZ tech coach, was a panelist as part of NMC, did a transformative impact in AI conference on October 14th. So they, similar to what we do for RSTD, they don't have class on that day. All their staff are part of this conference. They had several panelists from around the state talking about impacts of AI teaching and learning, and Danielle was part of that.
You can kind of see the titles, there's NMC, Interlock and Center for the Arts, Munson, Hagerty, and then Grand Valley had someone. So it was, it was great for Danielle to receive that request to be on that panel with those other professionals.
And then our own Mr. Swiegels.
Is that video, Kelly? Are we going to play it?
I'm hoping it'll let me open.
All right, hang on, get for it. No, I, because I watch this a lot, press pause.
You did get it.
Oh, press pause.
So two things, one, full disclosure, that's my daughter. She goes to Willow Hill, but that was part of the deal. She got this, but watch the girl in the back, cute little blonde girl. Like she's the focus of the video. She is living her best life. So pay attention to her, not me.
All my sounds are.
It looks like it's paintball.
No, it was perfect. The lady who did it, she's a hairstylist. And her sister next to her is like, what is?
That's so cute.
You're just staying on top of the school indefinitely.
That's next year. We're going to spend a night because the wife asked for something less tangible next year after the hair dying and the.
You camping out for a night is, she likes that idea better.
I was always paranoid about that.
Signing up next.
Camping on top of the school and sleepwalking. Don't send a chink or for my CPAP.
So that was fun.
Just a couple of things to highlight. Next week is a big week for us. We've got our regional staff development day on Tuesday all day. We've got great professional development and learning opportunities for our staff. Most of our staff is up at West Senior High. That includes both our certified staff, our administration staff, and our non-certified staff as well. We've also, many of our leaders and instructional coaches in the district are getting to see John Caddy on Wednesday at the resort.
Oh, you're kidding?
Not that.
Oh, can I sneak in?
I'll send you a photo of me and John.
I want to be in the back.
So really big week and lots of great things going on for us, also to start next week.
Exciting. We'll try not to bug you guys too much next week then. Okay, with that, we, our next board curriculum committee meeting is Tuesday, December 2nd at 8:30 a.m. here at the administration at Glen Loomis Building. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending today.